Hi, my name is Juliana Espinal. To begin, I'd like to start off by reading an extended version of a statement I gave to press this morning. Quote, "Unfortunately, it seems like we find ourselves in the exact same position we were in nearly one year ago. Our demands for more transparency within the district have yet to be answered. All the while, students, families, and teachers remain in the dark about important decisions that could greatly affect the trajectory of their experiences with PPSD. Yet again, it seems as though many of the teachers at risk of losing their jobs were not given ample notice and/or reasoning for their non-renewals. And I personally can't help but wonder how much this number will increase when we get closer to conversations about the upcoming budget season." "We desperately need to get our act together," end quote. For years, the Providence High School District has struggled with teacher retention, and we are in no position to continue to drive them out. Additionally, and rather inappropriately, the integrity and qualifications of the three non-binary educators at risk of losing their jobs is being called into question. I can, with complete confidence, say that anyone who puts as much time, effort, and consideration into our schools as these three educators have is deserving of a spot in our district. Two teachers moved across the country to become a member of our community. The other has well over ten years of experience working with students and has numerous accolades. Through PVD Core, the organization that these teachers pertain to, we have seen the first waves of tangible progress in student-teacher relations in decades. I am no stranger to this school board. Starting last year, I have shown my face and spoken at countless meetings. Independently, I dedicate nearly every waking moment of my life fighting for better conditions in the city that I call home. And amidst all the uncertainties of what I do, the conditions that surround them, the presence and support of the teachers in PVD Core is a constant. Even though Brandy Tucker, Sam Wallace, and Em Schlurer are not my teachers, their collective commitment to supporting us makes me feel like one of their own. Thank you."
Bravo!
Thank you, Juliana. Please read your name on the record for me. I believe you're doing well. You have three minutes, okay? Well, each of you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ali Rivera. I'm a junior at Classical High School, and I'm also a youth leader with Arise.
My name's Wanda Shannon. I'm a youth leader with Arise, and I go to Central Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Garcia Diaz. I am a youth leader with Arise, and I'm a junior at Central High School.
Tonight, we'll be reading a press release released by our school's Providence Youth Leader CoCorps regarding the recent non-renewals of three non-binary educators and organizers with Providence Core. Providence students oppose non-renewal notices to non-binary educators, call for transparency from state and district leaders. On February fourteenth, three non-binary educators and organizers with Providence Caucus of Rank and File Educators (PVD Core), a caucus of the Providence Teachers Union, received non-renewal notices, effectively ending their teaching careers in Providence public schools. These non-renewal notices come with little explanation against the backdrop of a hostile federal political climate regarding the LGBTQ+ community, union organizing, and public education as a whole. "It is so important that youth be represented in their schools. Removing LGBTQIA+ educators not only erases role models for queer students, but also sends a message that our identities are not welcome," said Maya Higawaki Ophira, an eleventh grader at Classical High School and a youth leader with the Providence Student Union. As someone who has siblings in Providence schools, it is important for them to learn to love themselves as they are. These teachers inspire students all over Providence to have the courage to be themselves and help others. PVD Core shows up consistently to build community with these youth leaders, offering their ideas as teachers to improve Providence schools, suggest to improve Providence schools, said Justlyn Melendez, a former student at Central High School and a youth leader with our school's PVD.
In December, our school's PVD hosted a youth-led community conversation with over a hundred participants about the future of Providence public schools. Participants highlighted the need for Providence to retain and support teachers who advocate for students and reflect their lives' experiences in the top priority. Having teachers with diverse backgrounds makes a difference. During our community conversation, students voiced their concerns about many of the teachers they loved being taken out of their schools. "The teachers that are truly care are changing kids, outlook on school, and to get rid of them is a great disservice to the youth," said Naim Aisen Hagazi, an eleventh grader at Providence Career and Technical Academy and a youth leader with Arise and Providence Student Union. "Our school PVD works towards a vision of dollars, democracy, and dignity in public schools." Which requires that we have affirming teachers across lived experiences. These teachers organizers have shown up for the community inside and outside of the school building. They've supported us throughout their school years, so in return, we must show them the same support, said Malia Odom, an eleventh grader at Central High School and a youth organizer with Arise.
Last spring, student organizers in Providence led a school walkout after nearly sixty teachers received non-renewal notices, illustrating how students are impacted by the removal of supportive teachers from their schools and a lack of transparency in decision-making.
Lack of transparency?
Unfortunately, it seems as though we are in the same exact position we were nearly a year ago. "Our demands for more transparency within the district have yet to be answered. Students, families, and teachers remain in the dark about important decisions that could greatly affect the trajectory of our experiences within PPSD." This was said by Juliana Espinal, an eleventh grader at Classical High School and a youth leader with the Providence Youth Student Movement (PRISM), who was part of last year's walkout. "Our school's PVD encourages youth and community members to attend tonight's school board meeting and testify in solidarity with PVD Core and supports Council President Raj Miller's call for transparency and accountability from Superintendent Montañez and Commissioner Infanta Green." Our school's PVD is a community alliance of Providence school, youth-led organization, and allies, including the Alliance of Rhode Island Southeast Asian for Education (ARISE), Providence Youth Student Movement (PRISM), Providence Student Union (PSU), Youth in Action: Young Voices, Parents Leading for Educational Equity (PLEE), Rhode Island Center for Justice, and the Center for Youth Community Leadership and Education (CYCLE). Working towards education in PPSD, our school's PVD came together in 2019 with the goal of ensuring that state control of Providence public school district results in educationally just an equitable system that adequately serves and centers the voices of leadership of all students and families. I apologize. I have a major idea.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to add, right? This time I wrote my phone, so my bad if I'm looking at it. As a school board and district, you all need to rethink about your priorities. The community and the students know what's best for them. They should not be towards the end of the agenda. Well, this is what we thought because we had apparently some of our... Our lead organizer had advocated us to even have us here early, you know, because we were intentionally supposed to go to the end, right? But these board meetings need to be more accessible and need to be more accessible for everybody. Instead of intentionally cranking everybody in a hot room, all these passionate people about fixing these problems that we are going through.
Nice. Well received. Thank you. Thank you so much. How are you? Can you read your name on the record for me?
Hi, my name is Nehya Sennical. I'm a high school senior, but also the lead organizer for the Providence Youth Student Movement and an LGBTQIA+ student dedicated to serving our district and community. The ongoing school year subjects us to continuous testing and conflicting demands, leaving us depleted and negatively impacted by the decisions of leadership. It is bizarre that in PPSD's very mission statement, it states that they support and develop children in our incredibly diverse district. But that very mission begins with hiring teachers similar to their diverse students. The Providence School District has a history full of vibrant LGBTQ+ students and communities. More recently, teachers who identify as such have joined us. A teaching staff that mirrors the student body fosters a sense of community based on shared understanding, allowing us to move past biased and discriminatory curricula and experiences. With teachers who understand and relate to their students, school becomes a place where students are welcome to become happy, content, and thrive in a supportive and non-threatening learning community. This district, once outwardly supportive of transgender and gender expansive individuals, are now practically firing teachers who identify with that same community. If the teachers are so unlike their students, how can we ever hope to foster a comfortable classroom atmosphere? It feels rather discriminatory, if you ask me. It's appalling that our district cannot even retain three non-binary teachers for more than five years, yet claims to support and protect transgender and gender expansive students. I implore PPSD, please, guys, as a student with a similar identity to the teachers who are harmed, to overturn their fair, unfair decision. This is vital, not just because of the blatant targeting of non-binary teachers, but also to cultivate a future of student-teacher connection through shared identities, thus realizing PPSD's reable of a diverse district. Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing? Yes, please read your name on the record, and you have three minutes. Each of you.
Hi, my name's... Hi, my name's Naya. I'm an eleventh grader from PCTA, and I'm a youth leader at Arise, PSU, and with OSBD. I'm here as a Black career student to voice a lot of my concerns as well as my peers. Every teacher that cares about LGBTQIA issues that you get rid of is another reason for my peers and I not to show up to school. A lot of times, when you don't see kids showing up or they're not interested in school, it's because we don't have that support. It's because we don't see ourselves in our teachers, and we need to see that. A lot of times, as a student of color and someone that is queer, I feel isolated in schools. Not being able to see someone that I can relate to. The lack of POC and LGBTQIA teachers affects the students at PPSD and their learning. If you care about students' outcomes, you should care about that. I'm reminded every day that my Blackness, my Queerness is a problem from how the system is set up, how three queer teachers can get told not to teach because they're not fit, they're not good enough. What does that say about me? Am I not good enough? Like, that's the things that are going through most of the kids' brain, and it's insane to think that we can't even, like these people have said, we can't even retain three of some of the minorities that are teachers. It's insane to think that we have to wait in the basement down below for hours just to talk about a problem. It's insane that I'm sweating right now. I'm hot. I'm tired. I feel like I've been marching. That's sick. It's Blackishni玛. Two hours. Oh my goodness. This... It's just insane. It's insane to think that the bare minimum, which is to see someone that looks like me, that represents me in a school, that I can see someone that reminds me that, hey, I can do it. I'm already in an engineering pathway at my school. I'm at PCTA. I don't already see people that look like me. So for me to hear this in the news that there's not diversity, there's not equity, there's not inclusion, and it tells me that I should be ashamed. And why should I feel ashamed? That's not okay, and I know it's not okay, but I have to realize that my younger cousins have to grow up in this district. So what happens now is going to affect not just me, but my cousins, my friends, my work. Like, this matters.
Thank you. Please just read your name on the record, okay?
Of course. My name is Miro Meek. I am a twelfth grade student at Classical High School, and I'm a co-director of the leadership team at the Providence Student Union. We already have a serious deficiency of representation and education for people of color and for queer and trans students. By picking on queer educators, you are claiming that they are harmful by default, that because of something they will never be able to control that is innate, their gender identities, they are worse at their jobs in some way because of this thing. Queer and trans people are not different from the general population. They don't have a higher chance of pushing an agenda on students more than any other teacher. Picking on them is blatant discrimination. I'm a trans student, and I have never met a non-binary teacher. I have never met a trans teacher. And every queer teacher I've met has never once spoken about being queer, not even once. I found it out from some rumor or something. That in itself is very concerning. That means that these three non-binary teachers that the school board is picking on, that PPSD is picking on, are probably a humongous percentage of all non-binary teachers, if not all of them. I have never met a non-binary teacher, and I'm pretty sure that most students that you ask will have never met a teacher that is openly queer or openly trans. This is a symbol of the discrimination that has been going on for centuries against queer and trans educators. And as Naya just said, this is reflecting on students and making them question whether they can achieve the same things that their cisgender heterosexual peers can. This is telling students that maybe you can't be a teacher if you're queer, if you're trans, because just because you're not seeing your people, just because you're not seeing people you identify with teaching you. It kind of makes you subconsciously slowly doubt yourself a little bit more every time your teacher is the same white cis het guy in every single history class. And we deserve to see ourselves reflected in our education. That will only improve our education. If you care about us and if you care about your education, you have to care about this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know if Kathleen came upstairs. How are you? That's good, that's good. All right, please read your name on the record.
My name is Kathleen Weiner. I was a student at the Masters in Library and Information Science Program at the University of Rhode Island with Sam Wallace. Over the course of our time together, Sam demonstrated a level of expertise and experience at the top of our class. They not only engaged with their peers, but consistently taught us how to be better educators and community members, and engaged us to support public schools. For this reason, I'd like to follow the question, the challenge to Sam's experience, and call for the renewal of their contract, along with the other non-binary educators who are being challenged today. Our system is already strengthened. It doesn't make us to cut experienced educators who are already in the system and are already demonstrating so much care for their students. That's all that I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there Dylan? Is there Dylan? Brandy Tucker? Who is Brandy?
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Wish it was better out.
Please read your name on the record. You have three minutes.
Hello. I'm Brandy Tucker. I'm a fifth grade ESL teacher at Webster Avenue Elementary. And as you all know, I am non-binary. I am also a member of Providence Core Caucus of Rank and File Educators that was formed last year after the district chose to close 360 out of the blue, or at least it seemed like to us. And in our support for those teachers, we came together and formed our caucus. Now, there are so many things I want to talk to you about tonight. I only have three minutes. One of them was never myself, because I like talking about myself, and many people have signed up tonight to talk about me and about what they see that I do, so I'm gonna let them handle that piece. I want to tell you about something that happened yesterday. Yesterday, the union brought together all of the teachers who were non-renewed. There are seventeen total. Nine of us were physically present. Out of those nine, there are two special educators, two male teachers of color, three math teachers. These stats alone, and one librarian, with four open librarian positions in the district, these stats alone are super concerning, considering all of those are hard to fill, and we need more male and teachers of color. Plus, nine of us in the room, five of us are queer. Five. I don't know the other eight teachers that were not present, but five of nine being queer is fifty-five and a half percent. And if it's five of seventeen, that's still twenty-nine percent of the non-renewed teachers falling under the LGBTQ umbrella, when it's reported by Ed Working Papers that was published in January 2025, that it's estimated that approximately only 3.3% of the queer population becomes K-12 educators versus non-LGBTQ at approximately four of the population. Now, those percentages, they don't sound like they're all that far apart. However, and they wouldn't if the population were 50% queer. The estimated adult queer population in the U.S. is approximately 13.9 million versus non-queer of 248 million. And now, let's look at these numbers and teachers. The queer K-12 educator population is estimated at 459,000 teachers in the United States. That's it. Four hundred fifty-nine thousand versus non-queer at 10.9 million. That is huge. This is a statistically astronomical number that it needs to be explained. How do you explain our jobs, what we've done, that we choose to be in Providence? We want these jobs. We want to be here, and we do good jobs. We're good at what we do. So why have we been non-renewed? Thank you.
Sam Wallace?
Hey, Sam.
How you doing, Sam?
Hey, buddy. I'm doing bad.
I'm so sorry. Listen, please read your name on the record, and you have three minutes.
Awesome. My name's Sam Wallace. I'm a Providence resident. They use "they" them pronouns. So when you talk about me, you can say "they" are currently the Del Cesto school librarian, and lucky to be so. I'm here today because I want to stay the school library. You guys, it's so much fun. You shouldn't be jealous. But I've been non-renewed, and I'm really, really pissed. I had to lead the Best Beauty and the Beast musical rehearsal. We had to stop rehearsals so that Em and I could submit testimony. We had to be like, hey, everybody, we gotta fight to keep our jobs. And the kids were like, why? And we were like, we don't know. They're looking for a more qualified teacher. It seems like that's been walked back, and maybe it's a financial reason. But my library's been under construction for like two years. A lot of money's been put into that. So if this position gets cut, I would really like the board to assert itself and look into that, please. I also want to let you know that our kids are scared. Our families are scared. Our communities are scared. I appreciate so much, and I know that folks are working so, so, so hard to deal with all of the terror that is coming in. We have students who have been hearing about TikTokers, about ICE rates consistently, and they are not coming to school. If attendance matters, we need to communicate with our families. The language that we've been hearing when we've been asking for things like know your rights training, both in-person and virtual, and training for school staff, which I have not yet received, we also need to be proactively sharing community supports like the ICE Alert hotline brought by our partners in Amore and ONMPSL. We need unaccompanied minor policies. We need those. We need to be aware of what's going on, and we need to retain teachers. But we have heard the language around try not to be a target. Don't really, don't talk about this. And I want to be clear. In my time at Del Cesto, I've had four different principals with a total of nine different administrators. Without constant leadership and consistent leadership in schools, we faced huge challenges. We have over a hundred vacancies in the schools, so although that presentation was great, it looks very different on the ground, vacant rooms. I've pointed this out before, and I worry that my participation in both my community action board, my community advisory board, excuse me, school improvement team, and instructional leadership team have put a target on my back. I'm an organizing teacher. I organize because my kids are unsafe, and it really, really matters. And when I organize, I get fired.
Who's targeting you?
These non-renewals are not just a blatant attack on queer educators. It also hurts our belonging score, listed on sideline.
Thirty-seven.
Thank you. I'm also going to redesign schools, as I've pointed out, but truth of matter is I need the board to stand up. This is the second time that the commissioners bypassed the board, and I want to be in this school. My students have watched kids leave. I was one of the people, when Gilbert Stuart closed, to advocate to have those students have transitional events and support as they have come in. We got manifolds. I talked to a Gilbert Stuart student today who had one educator all of last year. One.
Thank you so much.
It's Anna Cooperman. Hi.
I'm so sorry.
Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. I've been working on trying to say my name right. You gave me the chance. You gave me the chance.
I appreciate you. Three minutes, all right?
Yep. Is there a timeline here? Somebody will just tell you. My name's Anna Cooperman. I'm a teacher at Classical High School and also a parent of students in Providence, and I live in Providence. I've worked with Sam and Brandy in PVD Core, but also in Teach for Black Lives. It's a group that we've had for a couple of years where we meet once a month, and we, in the past, had run PDs for other teachers with the idea of trying to bring curriculum ideas that are inclusive to all of our teachers. And through that work, I got to know these two. I also worked as a new teacher coach for a little while. I haven't been in their classrooms. I couldn't tell you what their instruction is, but I could tell you that I can tell that they love students and that they care very deeply about families and the community of Providence. And that is, I think, crucial to being a teacher in this city, that you have to have that kind of heart, you have to have that kind of love. And they have that, and I have seen that in the way that they talk about their families and their kids. And they talk about it like that, with the words "love," and as if they are their families and their kids. And I think it would be a loss to say that we don't want people like that in our schools. And in addition, the identity piece that the students just brought up, that wanting to see teachers who are like them, it's, you know, I think it's incredibly important that we bring teachers of color to Providence. That's been one of the things that I've worked on, and that Teach for Black Lives is one of the principles. But it's also obviously very important to have non-binary and queer teachers in our classrooms for kids to see that and to see that we support that. Oh, I didn't bring my glasses. But I also wanted to speak very quickly about the presentation about ICE. I super appreciated the letter that we got at the end of January. I don't know that very many teachers read it. I don't know. I think we really do need, and I appreciate that staff and that the front desk people are getting training. I think we really need to start thinking about our teachers. We need to start training our teachers. And we need to start, and I recognize that some teachers are not gonna want that. I think a lot of us do. I really do. I think most of us do. We work in Providence because these are our people, and we feel like that. But I think it needs to come from above. It needs to come from the district, that we're gonna have trainings for teachers. And that that's the kind of tenor that we're gonna set in our schools, is that our teachers are here for you, and that they know some of the things that the front desk people, it seems like, are getting trained on. some of the things that the front desk people, it seems like, are getting trained on. And just the last thing about being targeted. My dad was nine when he was in a ghetto in, in the Ukraine. And the whole idea of keeping your head down and not speaking because people are going to see you, that's, you know, bullies and fascists don't listen. That's not how they, that's not how they work. They're going to target us either way. So I, I, I go for the drills. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Opelia? Please read your name into the record for me. Read it.
Hello, my name is Opelia Vervinia. I am a school social work intern at Spaziano Elementary School, which is one of Providence's dual-language schools. To go off of what some other folks have been saying, as part of my internship, I had inquired about doing a know your rights training for these students, families and staff at Spaziano Elementary School. When I impired, the answer I was given was we do not want to put a target on ourselves. We are talking about a dual-language school in a sanctuary city. If you think that that target doesn't already have flashing LED lights, then I don't quite know what to tell you. So I found that deeply distressing. And in talking with other members of P V D Corps, that has been the same response that has been given throughout the district. And shoving our heads in the sand is not going to help our students, is not going to help our families, is not going to help our community or keep anyone safer. Additionally, one thing I would like to bring up is the non-renewal of multiple queer, non-binary and black educators in the district. We already have a shortage of educators. And to target these individuals, particularly because these individuals are going to be role models for our community, they are going to give students people to look up to who share their lived experience, who share their identities. And as a social worker, I know very well how important that is for the development of children, the development of their self-esteem, their development of belief in themselves and belief that they can grow up to do anything, to be anything, to be anyone they want. And here in Providence Public Schools, we should be fostering that energy in all of our students. Thank you.
Lindsay? How you doing, Lindsay?
Hello, finally. Good to see you. My name is Lindsay Paiva. I use she/her pronouns. I teach third grade ESL at Webster Avenue School. Good to be here. I got to tell you guys, this is your first convening as a board and moving public comment to the end was not a good look. Very disappointing and shameful. So I'm not feeling it. Appreciate the motion title, but I'm not feeling it. I understand you have agenda items to attend to, but I just want to remind you, as Asia mentioned, like your first job is to serve the community and hear our voices, number one. Then you can get to your agenda, because we didn't set that agenda, but we're going to set this agenda. At the, at one point, there were over a hundred and twenty people in the overflow room. It was a thousand million degrees. Luckily, we brought snacks, but it's not, it's, that's not the way that we want to be. Moving forward, we made multiple requests to move this meeting to C C T A or a larger venue. We knew there would be high turnout, so. But I can promise you it's going to take more than a couple of flights of stairs to stop this movement, so no worries. I heard a lot in the presentations about prioritizing student safety, making sure students have trusted adults that they can go to when they need to. And I hope folks can see like the absolute hypocrisy of that presentation in juxtaposition with the non-renewals of beloved educators who do that for kids every day, right now. Not someone who may in the future become available to be hired. And to speak on the immigration and the policy that was mentioned, to echo Sam, teachers have been told that this information is on a need-to-know basis. And I do appreciate the, the thought that has gone into it. I, Dr. Montana, as I appreciate your letter, I think it was nicely done as a first step. But I got to say, like, I'm charged with protecting and caring for twenty-five small people every single day. And I would argue that I'm on, I'm on a need-to-know basis. Most of my kids are from immigrant families and I'd really like to see the, the face office launch a more aggressive and supportive campaign in collaboration with community partners. It doesn't need to happen in a vacuum. This work is already happening. We're going to do it no matter what, but we'd like to see the school district taking some ownership, training staff members on how to support students in this difficult time. The kids are scared. They're not coming to school and when they come to school, they're upset. And we all know that you can't learn like that. So this argument about becoming a target again is absolute nonsense. We're already a target. But onto the non-renewals. You know, I had to touch and go and add some stuff, so I'm almost out of time. But I just want to say like, how are we non-renewing teachers in hard-to-fill areas? We don't even have warm bodies in a hundred classrooms. Never mind excellent educators doing work. I just want to say a quick stat about Webster Avenue School. We have fifty-five students with I D Ps. We've got eight students getting services right now out of fifty-five. That means forty, forty-seven are not getting services. We have two empty self-contained classrooms and we're non-renewing special educators. That is an absolute travesty. We have expired I D Ps. I love my friends, but I don't have time to talk about them. But I think we need to be looking more at the shuffling around of administrators and how that creates instability.
Are you Megan?
Yes, I don't know if I'm speaking.
I am right here. I'm sorry. Have three minutes, alright?
Great. I I am Megan Chambers Lundquist. I'm not an educator nor a student, but I am a Providence community member as well as an LGBTQ plus community member. I won't need three minutes to say this. It is unacceptable to have these non-renewals happen to queer teachers, especially when there's such a need, especially with this administration handing down insane executive orders that are affecting our community. We need all the support we can get. And I would like to call for those non-renewals to be reversed. Thank you.
I'll call this next person by this name, Mr. Q. He was my live streamer. Nice to see you.
Mary Moeen had requested to speak and me to speak for her. So I don't know if you've got that information?
What was her name?
Mary Moeen. She wasn't on the list, but she had been there.
She not here?
I don't real, and she couldn't be here. And she, she asked me this.
All is well.
I don't need six minutes, but I, I'll, I'll do my best.
All is well.
Is this, okay.
So I'm Peter Cannell. I am a retired school librarian. For, I've been in the district for over twenty years and a resident of Providence. And Heidi, I am your constituent, so it's very nice to meet you. And just to summarize my comments, the, I, I really wanted to speak about Sam Wallace. As a colleague, we, I got to know her, I got to know them. And I actually, since retirement, have volunteered at their library and have observed their interactions with students and interactions with staff and found them to be really a core member of that community at Del Cesto. And I just wanted to note that, that Sam also received from my professional association, School Librarians of Rhode Island, an award last year for, a, 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 award for new librarians, new school librarians, sowing leadership potential. I received that award when I got out of library school many years ago. And I do see a lot of potential in Sam. And one thing is that she took, uh, Sam took over a library that had been closed for two years, had been a mess, and really brought it back. And I'm telling you, if that library, if Sam goes and that library is empty next year and closed, you will hear from me again and you will hear from our community. We believe in our students having school libraries. This testimony is from Mary Moeen, Ph.D., regarding the non-renewal of Sam Wallace particularly. Mary, it goes, my name is Mary Moeen and I am a concerned faculty member and coordinator of the RIDE Approved School Library Media Education Preparation Program at University of Rhode Island. I'm testifying to oppose the non-renewal letter received by Sam Wallace, the school librarian at Del Cesto Middle School. Sam graduated from the University of Rhode Island's School Library Media Educator Preparation Program in the spring of 2024 while working as an emergency certified school librarian at Del Cesto. It's another thing to mention is that she, that Sam took on the position and got emergency certified while working. Sam was one of the strongest students in the program. The School Librarians of Rhode Island, our professional organization of which I am currently president, selected them to receive the Competitive Maurice Tugus Award, which recognizes the hard work of an emerging professional and a potential as future leaders of the Rhode Island library community. As Sam's advisor, instructor and university supervisor, I feel extremely qualified to speak on behalf of their competence as a school librarian. My evaluations of Sam's teaching lessons and assessing their progress towards demonstrating the American Association of School Librarians' library and preparation standards consistently indicate that they met the professional standards. You're just a little bit long.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Can you read the record, please? Yep. Thank you. Em?
Ben?
How are you, Em? Doing good, doing good. Please read your name to the record. You have three minutes.
Alright, my name's Em Schlotter. I'm also non-binary. I'm part of Core. I'm a second-year teacher at Del Cesto Middle School. For a break, I was handed a non-renewal notice that said they desired to find a more qualified teacher. I'm not from Rhode Island. I moved here from California in 2021 to serve with City Year AmeriCorps. I was placed at a, I was placed in a fifth-grade dual-language classroom at Carl G. Laura, and I stayed there for two years. I would have liked to stay there, but Laura got closed. After that, I transitioned to Del Cesto. This is my second year in a sixth-grade ELA ESL position. As of right now, there's currently six vacancies for my position. There is another vacant sixth-grade ELA classroom on my floor. My non-renewal is just adding a mother vacancy and you're taking away a consistent educator who's stable and a supportive adult for the students. And this is one to impact their learning. Okay. They already don't have enough teachers. Most of my kids have maybe half teachers and half vacancies. They only have maybe five stable adults in their school for the day. I have students from my first-year City Year that are in eighth grade at Del Cesto right now that are gearing up to graduate and move on to high school. And I would like to be celebrating that with them. And like Sam said, our kids are doing the musical. They're so excited. I couldn't focus on that today because I have prepared for this. These are, I want to focus on my kids and instead I'm here trying to fight for this. And I just want to continue to contribute to my community. I'm teaching students I've known since they were in the third and fourth grade. I'm teaching siblings of students that I had in 2021. It's more than school to me. This is a community of students and parents and faculty and staff who have supported me and believed in me. And I just want to return that favor. Brandy, Sam and I, we show up every single day. We are working beyond our contract hours to ensure that we're giving our students the best education they deserve. We are out and proud educators. We ensure that all of our queer students know they have someone that's listening to them, that's advocating for them, that understands what their experiences are. I know I'm a new teacher. I am learning and growing. I'm actively seeking feedback. I love feedback. And I'm implementing that. And I am in two graduate programs right now. I'm doing my ESL and my secondary. And P P S D is helping fund that education. I'm doing the best I can for my students. I know there's going to be other students in other districts, but this is my community and this is where I want to teach. And these are the students I want to support. So I'm asking, please consider rescinding these for both myself and Sam and Brandy. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Lindsay. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing good. Nice to see you. Please read your name into the record. Make sure I pronounce it right. Nice to see you. Three minutes.
My name is Keely Rockwall and I am a, it's all good. And I'm a social studies teacher at Hope High School. I'm here tonight to call the school board to do everything in its power to protect our trans and immigrant students. The irony is not lost on me that exactly a year ago today, I sat in the same room, bolstered by similar levels of community support to fight against the closure of 360 High School. A school, by the way, that had the highest levels of sense of belonging in the state on survey works, something that we claim to prioritize here. Since then, politics have shifted and leaders have turned over, but the reality has stayed the same. The district is not interested in listening to or accommodating the community. That is apparent tonight as we sit in a room that cannot fit everyone who wants to speak and community members are in the basement, sitting on the floor. There's only twenty chairs from there right now. That was apparent two weeks ago when three of my beloved fellow teachers and organizers were non-renewed without cause. And that has been apparent this past month as students, parents and teachers have called on the district to take a firm stance in defense of our trans students from discriminatory executive orders and our immigrant students from the threat of ICE. The district exists to serve our students and families and yet is going out of its way to discourage our input. The school work exists to hold the district accountable to the community. You can insist that the non-renewals of Brandy, Em and Sam are rescinded. They are all excellent educators and role models for our students as shown through the many testimonies that you will hear tonight. And our students deserve the very best educators serving them. The very best will sob a kind to work in Providence schools when they see that this is how they may be treated. This happened to 360. We lost a third of their, of our educators from the district when we closed our school. You can also insist that the district releases clear, accessible, translated resources that explicitly outline the protections that our schools provide. You can insist that they host know your rights trainings for families and for staff, as mentioned before, and that the SOPs for staff are available to everyone who works in a building. Districts across the country are showing their communities that they are unafraid of protecting our students. We know that Providence will be targeted anyway. We need to ensure families that our students, that our schools have their backs. This is how we build a better district, listening to the experts, which are the teachers, the students, the parents, and serving their needs. Protecting our teachers means higher quality instructions and easier recruitment of world-class talent, part of the top goals. Protecting our students and families means higher engagement, higher attendance and a higher public opinion of our schools. I urge the school board to take action immediately and make its power known. Our people are worth fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Benjamin? Benjamin, please read your name to the record. You have three minutes.
Benjamin Deeds, science teacher, Del Cesto Middle School, six years. Thank you for your time. I'm testifying today to urge the school board to reconsider P P S D's decision to non-renew three non-binary teachers. I'm testifying today for the school board to consider the motivations behind this decision. And I'm testifying for the community to consider an individual's account of working alongside one of these educators to find a more qualified teacher as yet unidentified. That was justification rubber stamped in letters read to three non-binary educators. I hope with my testimony to help more people appreciate and see the level of commitment my colleague has shown to our school community. I would like this room to see what a public school administration is discarding. And above all, I hope this testimony gives another challenge to the cynical justification for these non-renewals to find a more qualified teacher as yet unidentified. I feel my perspective could give the most insight to the faculty member I've worked with for my entire time at P P S D, Sam Wallace, the librarian from Del Cesto Middle School. In Sam's case, a teacher's qualifications, according to P P S D, cannot relate to how long a teacher has been a part of the school. For six years now, Sam has been my colleague at Del Cesto. They began first as a City Year Impact Manager, School Culture Coordinator, and now a school librarian. This is someone who has been consistent and vital part of our school's functionality, someone who has been continued to come back year after year. All six years, without exception, our school has been understaffed. We have seen the turnover of four principals and a majority of the faculty. Creating and maintaining structures for functional schools desperately calls for staff retention. P P S D should value educators that stay in this district like Sam. Again, in Sam's case, qualifications cannot be their educational certification or school involvement. The practical list of Sam's accomplishments in this field speaks for itself. They received the Maurice Tugus Award for their work in the library. They have a master's degree and ten years of youth experience. They're in the building well before school starts. They're in the building well before school starts and well after. When the Director of School Operation position was removed, Sam took on the role of categorizing and managing our school laptop inventory, a monumental task for a middle school of our size. For their first two years as our librarian, the library was under construction. This did not stop Sam. They ran book fairs on our stage during lunches and would roll a book cart to the cafeteria in the mornings before classes began. All this with a full caseload of students. This year, the library media arts space is finally open. It's a beautiful space that the students and staff treasure. I was shocked to hear at the culmination of so much effort to usher this space in, PPSD would like to find a more qualified teacher than Sam. What qualifications are they seeking? Conveniently, this is within three years of Sam's start date as a classroom educator. After three years, Rhode Island Law managed a reason to be given for a nonrenewal. I think the answer is simple. PPSD is seeking to maintain a staff in precarity, and to this end, PPSD is clearly targeting marginalized voices fighting the hardest for our kids before they need to get real justification. Again, I urge the school board to reconsider this decision that was made by PPSD administration. Thank you.
How are you on today?
Well, how are you?
Doing good, please read your name to the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Alberto. And, buenas tardes. I go by they/them pronouns, and Providence has been my lifelong home. I'm Brown University alumnus and a first-generation college student. I grew up on Chalkstone Avenue and was raised by my parents, who immigrated from Mexico. Both my mother and my father were undocumented. They worked as factory workers, janitors, housekeepers, and in healthcare. According to them, their biggest achievement was being able to provide for their family. To me, another great achievement was them teaching me the importance of education and compassion. My mother fought to put me in schools like classical for two reasons. To ensure that I would have an education worth all her sacrifices and to protect me from bullying. Much of this bullying was because of my parents' undocumented status, which was a source of deep fear and anxiety during my childhood. I feared being separated from my parents. I took on my parents' worries as they struggled to make ends meet. Through tragic circumstances, we even experienced a period of homelessness. I think I was too young to understand what was happening, but the feelings were all too real. The federal government has made it clear that they will carry out an agenda of fear, chaos, intolerance, and violence. They have let us know that two of the reasons are papers and pronouns. Superintendent Dr. Javier Montañez, why are you issuing these nonrenewals at the cost of our community's livelihoods? Are you preemptively supporting the agenda of Donald Trump and Elon Musk? These nonrenewals also further worsen the teacher shortage we have in our community. Be transparent with us. I am disappointed with the lack of respect and urgency towards this matter. In essence, all I heard from our, from the session, the agenda item on the safety of students was, "We will comply, and then we'll send the kid over to a therapist so they can deal with the loss of, with family separation." I'm also disappointed to hear that the legal team is spread across several districts. Are we not deserving of a legal, of a legal team that is able to respond with immediacy and urgency to the presence of ICE and federal agents at our schools? I heard another comment that also disappoints me within the school board, that what do we do when the law is unjust? The law is unjust right now. Not all teachers were trained in the SOP. I also heard another comment during that session, that students advocate for themselves. I was not able to advocate for myself when I was in Providence Public Schools at a younger age. The community, you mentioned that the community has to pick up for the government. That is true, the community will do a lot of the work that is needed to advocate and to organize around these crucial issues. However, I'm also of the belief that the government should be the community. And if these are not your goals, then it is of course obvious to me that you're not up to the job.
Thank you, thank you so much. How are you?
Hello.
You have three minutes, they're actually going to be working for me.
Okay, I'm Emily Grace Lomé. I work at South Providence Library, which is part of the Community Libraries of Providence. I'm here to speak today on behalf of myself and on behalf of a number of my fellow union members, as represented by USARI. My statements do not necessarily reflect the stance of the library as a whole organization, I just wanted to say that. We would like to make the following statement, however. On behalf of CLPDD union staff, as represented by USARI, we wish to affirm our support for our fellow workers. Despite pressure from the federal government, we want to see robust local, district-level policies in place that protect all of our students and staff, especially our LGBTQIA+ and immigrant and/or undocumented populations. As fellow union workers, we also want to echo City Council President Rachel Miller's concerns about these educators being additionally targeted for their role as union organizers, which has been reported to be an increasing pattern. To quote, "Union members should have confidence that their jobs will not be at risk if they organize for better working conditions." The public needs assurances that employment decisions in our schools are being made fairly and in the best interest of students. We agree and we demand the same. My own personal statement, and then I'll be done, is I am shocked and dismayed by the decision to not renew these three educators' contracts for what appears to be discriminatory and personal reasons. I know Sam Wallace's wonderful work and commitment through my role as a public librarian, also serving our city's youth. There are fixed outright events around Providence, fighting on behalf of others, so I'm here today to fight for them and for their colleagues and for the children that we all take care of every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. How are you?
How do you think?
Can we read your name to the record, four minutes, three minutes?
My name is Joanne Rich. I use she/them pronouns, I live in Providence. Earlier, we had very detailed presentations about how we're going to resist and protect our students from what's coming down from Washington, and I think you've had your answer from the speaker's performance. Don't target queer teachers. Don't target dedicated organizers. I'm 58, and I've known since I was 13 that I was queer, even though I didn't have words to describe it. I certainly didn't see representation in the media or in my school. It was difficult and confusing, I felt like an invisible freak. I worked at schools my whole career, from elite schools in New York City to the International School of Amsterdam, to Lincoln School, to community prep school here in Providence that serves primarily kids from low-income families. And let me tell you one thing they all have in common. They all have LGBTQ and trans and non-binary kids there, every single school. They're just kids there who are trying to figure out how to be themselves in a scary world. I've served as advisor to the LGBTQ clubs at these schools. I have been known as a safe person in these schools. I know these students, they are in every school, and as you've heard, they are in PPSD schools, and more than you think because not all of them are. There are many non-binary and trans people in my life, many of them young adults whose journeys have not been easy, in spite, for many of them, of having loving and supportive families. Society makes it hard, and schools should be a place to learn and thrive and feel safe and cared for, and not a place to struggle. In some ways, it's better now than in the 1980s. There's more representation, more resources, more communities, but in some ways, it's much worse, because the hostility is so much greater, because the hate comes to LGBTQ plus, trans, and non-binary students 24/7 on their phones, because it comes to them from their president, who they should be able to admire and not be terrified of. Non-binary and trans kids take their lives at terrifying rates because of this hate and colonization, and I know about this from my daughter's friend, Sarah. What message do you think it sends to them to see their teachers fired and think it's because of their gender identity? I can tell you, it says, "You are worthless, you are unmunted. If you are yourself, we will destroy you." From tonight's presentation, it doesn't sound like that's the message that PPSD and RI are trying to send. Shouldn't every kid feel valued? Shouldn't they have teachers who are role models and reflect what they're going through in life? Given that there's a shortage of teachers, let alone excellent teachers, who bring something truly valuable and unique to Providence Public Schools? Oh, am I done? No, okay. Being non-binary is especially, I'm just going to say it accurate, is especially valuable because the world wants people to be systemate. Non-binary especially should not be tolerated.
Thank you. The law? The laws? Judith?
Judith Thatcher.
Sarah?
Yes, here.
Who's Sarah?
We're here.
Sarah, this morning.
Read your name to the record, you have three minutes.
Alright, thanks. I might be five. Hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Mordon, and I am a retired PPSD school librarian. I was bringing for 15 years. And so I've been an employee, my, two of my kids went to Providence schools, and I still live in Providence, one of the very few. So I welcome and accept all non-binary people as educators. And I don't care whether they're LGBTQ or plus, it doesn't matter. They're here and they're excellent, and I know Sam Wallace, so I'm here in particular for Sam. So I also am curious about whether or not part of the rationale for getting rid of these three educators is because they are supporters of PBD Corp., which, if you ask me, the union could use a little shaking up. And so if that's it, either one of those reasons for getting rid of these educators would be not only wrong morally, but also most likely illegal. Other people have mentioned this, but PPSD has vacancies and substitutes up the zoo. So keeping good people like Sam, where's the problem? I don't understand it. I have volunteered with Sam, I helped Sam work on my funded scholastic book fairs. So the next thing about Sam is, and for all school librarians, is you don't have anybody who's really qualified to evaluate a school librarian. Because, and this is where the part where I'm not going to be so polite, nobody in the Providence School Department seems to have a clue as to what the 21st century library is supposed to be. Not a clue, and believe me, I've been to school board meetings, I've met with various superintendents, and I've offered to come do a training for them on what school librarians are supposed to be doing, what the program should look like. So to me, the administration at PPSD has their head stuck in sand because they do not know, and they're apparently not reading all the reference and research material that I've sent out. And I have done it, believe me, a number of times. The other thing about, and other people have mentioned COVID, is that, you know, after our kids went through COVID, all the more reason to not just moan and groan about reading levels, which are for granted, no offense to the tap presentation. But the dismal reading level, really, they need school librarians. They need to have choice of reading material. They need to have, you know, a socialization around reading. And, you know, you read any article and it's not there. Kids really suffered after COVID. So to read, to-
Nine.
Give me 15 seconds.
Okay. PPSD, in my opinion, does not utilize the school libraries properly. And, you know, you have the elementary librarians in their lunchroom every single day. You all know that. Why aren't they in their library having a reading club, a book club? I mean, really, it's crazy. So in regards to the chat people, I love their presentation, but the dismal stats and stuff, you know, there's not that much, you know, worry or so happy about.
Thank you so much. D O? D O, yeah. Please read your name to the record, you have three minutes, alright?
Sure. So my, my name is Dee L. Hulfer, and I thank you for my three minutes tonight. I'm a minister and a social worker here in Rhode Island. I live in Providence, I don't have kids, so I don't have children in the school district. But in my work and in my world, I certainly encounter many educators and teachers from this district. And while I'm grateful for the work you've begun around immigration, I do not hear the same thing for LGBTQ individuals. In case I did say it, I am a proud transgender individual. So in these times of increasing hostility and persecution of gender diverse individuals, as you named, we know that's what's happening, we sometimes forget that executive orders aren't law, that we have very real protections still in this state. We have laws, we have non-discrimination policies, we have Title IX, we have workplace protections. President Trump's executive orders are meant to marginalize, and we are obeying in advance. It is worrisome that these school districts, that some school districts are seen fit to remove the EI. There was one slide, one slide that named LGBTQ individuals in two hours. Without being legally required to make these changes yet, sorry, it's close to my heart. Without being legally required to make these changes, at least just yet, we are obeying in advance. And it's just as wrong what we're doing to teachers who, I won't repeat what you've heard. I promise you, though, that these actions don't go unnoticed. We need assurances, as you named.
Oh, Angel.
Angel. That we need to know our moral core, we need to know right now who we are and where we're going, where we're going along. This is the time that PPSD has to reaffirm its commitment to the right of trans and non-binary students and staff, both. And there are a bunch of ways to do so. We can do trainings, I do trainings, many of us do these trainings. Your students and your teachers need you to remember what's at stake. Someone talked about suicide, one in for kids, trans and non-binary kids, will commit suicide unless they have one, unless they have one strong adult in their life, and that adult is so often at school. So I'm just going to stop, I wrote too much because I'm a minister. But I ask you to reverse these renewals and to remember that they are doing the work we need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Kate.
Hi, Mary.
Read your name to the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kate Jones. I am a Purdue Middle School sub at PPSD. I work in different schools, but have mainly spent time at Del Cesto, West Broadway, and the Stanley Green. I am here to express extreme concern and outrage over the issuance of nonrenewal notices for beloved PPSD educators Brandy Tucker, M Schluter, and Sam Wallace. I also want to express my support of, one, trans, trans, and non-binary students and staff, and, two, immigrant and undocumented students, staff, and families. I am strongly encouraging you all, as a powerful part of PPSD's leadership, to collectively reaffirm your own robust support of an expansion of resources for these impacted communities within PPSD. I also just want to add, I'm voting for the drills, and as a sub, I haven't received any of those SOPs. And also, I just want to add a response to dress codes. Let's not police students' bodies with dress codes. But anyway, through subbing at Del Cesto, I can attest to the beloved and impactful presences that both M Schluter and Sam Wallace embody for their students and colleagues alike. I have subbed in Mix M Room, and not only is there evidence of thoughtful and relevant instruction and worn decor around their classroom, the students are also often leaving them notes about how they miss them or coming into class and sad to hear that Mix M is out that day. When I see them with students in the hall, Mix M also always seems to exude a kind and grounded presence. They have also been supportive to me as a sub in the school, leaving plans for subbing if they are out, which is not a given, and letting me borrow a needed supply or material. Mix M is another powerful, powerful presence given Del Cesto, incredibly kind, open, knowledgeable, and they have an equal way of holding students' attention that can only be garnered through building relationships based on mutual respect. I was able to witness them bring students into the renovated library for the first time. The way they balanced letting something like forty or so super-excited students freely explore a seemingly new space while holding safe boundaries was impressive, to say the least. As a sub, it's always helpful to run into them in the hall on a day when they're in testing or schedule changes because they always seem ready and happy to support fellow staff in any way they can. I would hope it would go without saying that it is imperative that LGBTQIA+ and all students get to see themselves in respected elders as openly non-binary educators, Mix M, Mix Tucker, and two of these students, that there are possibilities for them and their queer futures and presence. I cannot believe that these dedicated and highly treasured teachers have been given nonrenewal notices and may never be allowed to teach in PPSD again due to the administration's- non-renewal notices and may never be allowed to teach in PPSD again due to the administration's desire to do what we've heard. Who could be more qualified? I have subbed in so many classes that haven't had a certified teacher for the majority of the year, where we Perdium subs are filling in and being begged by admin to take on long-term subpositions for which we are not given proper support. There are currently over a hundred vacancies in PPSD. It seems clear and is deeply concerning that these teachers have been singled out and punished unjustly either for their non-binary identities or their organizing and advocacy for the PPSD community.
Thank you. Hey, Lauren.
Hello.
Please read your name and record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. My name is Aurelie Diaz. I'm a Providence resident and assisting to a former PPSD graduate from Mount Pleasant High School and the public of public schools. I would like to speak on the need for absolute transparency among actions taken by the school district and other positions of power within education, particularly during this time when all of the protections and advancements our progressive communities have fought for are trembling around us and are being eroded by fascist operations. In particular, we are seeing individuals that are part of marginalized communities being asked to leave our schools and that does nothing to help our marginalized students who create connections with these educators. When you remove educators that actually care and want to make a difference here, you are eroding the kind of change that this district needs. At least two of the educators that you have provided non-renewals for are ESL or English Language Learning Educators. I would not be here testifying in English if it were not for ESL educators. Providing non-renewals to educators that can help bridge the access needs for particularly our undocumented students is a huge disservice to this district. At least three of the educators given non-renewals identify as non-binary people. Trans students, non-binary students do not have unlimited spaces to feel safe. Why are we then deconstructing the spaces that these educators are helping build for these current and future students? Within this political climate, it is more important than ever to build and empower our students and educators that are part of marginalized communities. These non-renewals do not provide us the community, do not provide us a community with faith that this district is working to support our undocumented, our non-binary and our marginalized students at the full level that they should be. I hope after tonight that this can be rectified and that the district can, and the state, can listen to the community and work together to implement the kind of changes our students really need. And one particular point on safety of students, the presentation on safety in schools, I noted that there was a point on school personnel not being required to assist with the apprehension of a student. I think that should be changed to that no personnel should not be allowed at all to apprehend any student or assist with the apprehension of any student. Teachers should never be supported, advised or police in apprehending any student because that further erodes the safety and the trust within the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian? Hey, Christian.
How's it going?
Going well, going well. Nice to see you. Please read your name and record.
Christian Moshe Bell Miller. Most of them are CJ. Wanted to raise in Providence. I work in the cat welfare sector. Prior to that, I did a lot of work in nonprofit. And I'm here today as a private citizen because I was a product of the public schools. But I'm really here to talk to you because I've seen and heard things about the dysfunction on this body that I think contributes to some of why we're here today. And I came to not echo a lot of what's already been said. I am in support of it. I think it's a shame that we have to be here today to fight for this and it's a stain on the moral fabric of this board. As leaders entrusted with the future of our students, it is crucial that we define what excellence in leadership looks like, not only for the sake of our schools, but for the communities we serve. At the heart of effective board leadership, school board leadership, is a singular unwavering priority, should be at least, the best interest of our students. Everything you do as a school board must be rooted in that mission, ensuring that every decision made, regardless of the subject, has a positive lasting impact on the children and young adults in our schools. It is a part of door responsibility to remove barriers to learning, create opportunities and empower while ensuring students are well-equipped to thrive academically, socially and emotionally. This kind of leadership begins with a deep understanding of the needs of the students and the educators. It also requires board members to stay actively involved, to listen intently and to remain vigorously attuned to the unique challenges that our students and educators face each day. It means engaging with teachers, parents and the community at large in understanding that every voice counts, especially youth voice. A good school board leader, like I imagine many of you presume yourselves to be, is one who listens before offering their perspective, who humbles themselves enough to allow for differing of opinions and views without becoming confrontational, as I've seen on some viral videos, or belligerent toward one another. As members, you must embody the very essence of compassion and understanding because we know that the more we embrace these qualities of leadership, the more informed and effective our decisions will be and the greater impact you can have. It involves transparency and accountability. You must ensure that the community trusts that you will make decisions based on the best available data, guided by a clear vision for excellence, and be open to this feedback, regularly evaluating your own policies, remain unbiased and adjust when necessary to ensure that you're meeting the evolving needs of Providence public school students. As Providence native and product of public schools, I trust those here tonight will dedicate themselves to the work that matters most. Thank you.
Is there Colin? Lexi?
No, no.
Oh, Colin. All right. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing good, doing good.
Cause you better.
I know. Please read your name and record. You have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Colin Whitney. Hello, everyone. I'm an ESL teacher at Del Cesto Middle School. And when I first entered the district as a Perdium substitute a few years ago, Sam Wallace was the, pretty much the only person who gave me any real practical useful knowledge about how to navigate the school. We had a fire drill in the first day. And I had no idea what to do my first day in Providence schools as a sub. And there was no red folder like this, but Sam helped. And so we all got outside in an orderly fashion and we were all safe. And this is one of the many ways that Sam is so supportive of their fellow staff, of their students. They are an essential educator. And honestly, I don't know what will happen to Del Cesto if Sam is gone. I just want to read real quick some student testimony from some students who we both have in class. Dear Providence School Board, I am a student at Del Cesto Middle School. I'm currently an eighth grader. I'm writing this letter to support Mix M and how you guys should rethink this decision y'all made. First, I want to start with Mix M is a wonderful librarian teacher. They also have a master's degree showing how capable they are. So I wonder if you can find a more qualified teacher. Most of us students, I'm a student again, have good grades because of Sam. I got into my CTE program thanks to Sam. I am very grateful to be able to call Sam my librarian teacher. I will no longer be at Del Cesto Middle School next year, but I believe Sam should. Mix M organizes the school dances and many other things. I was on the basketball team and we won the city championship this school year and Sam announced it the next day in the morning, gave us snacks and said congratulations to us. I know it doesn't seem like much, but it was for me and my teammates. You could ask anyone and they would tell you how much Mix M is helpful. Sam lets us go to the library with a teacher's permission. This is a student who wrote that. And lets us work on homework, schoolwork, anything, showing how much they care about us and our grades, our future. I'm tearing up because I care about Sam. And this is deeply, 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 deeply unfair. I'm one of the teachers who relies on Sam for their collaboration. Sam helps with research projects. They're an excellent librarian. I heard somebody speaking earlier about what a library should look like in this day and age and Sam has mastered the art of it. Multimedia, relevant curricular materials, you name it. Here is another excerpt from a letter. They do their job correctly, but they also make it fun so the kids actually love to participate. Mix M does so many things for this school, including organizing plays, dances, book fairs and so much more. They should be able to continue to enjoy what they do as much as they already do. Please let Mix M stay here at Del Cesto and keep doing what they love most. I also have the distinct pleasure of working with Mix Schluter, Mix M Schluter, who is an excellent sixth grade ELA teacher. As an ESL teacher, I work closely with M and can attest to their character and their excellence as an educator as well. Let me just add that this does not look good. It's safe. This is very clear targeting of queer educators and dedicated labor organizers and it reeks of illegality, quite frankly, and immorality. You must rescind these non-renewals. And don't come back and say, don't rescind them and then issue some more non-renewals based on finances because it's going to be very transparent. Okay, where's this coming from? That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lexi?
Hi.
Please can you read your name and record? After a minute.
Yes. Hi, I'm Lexi Schmitzler. I'm a Providence resident, a former AmeriCorps City Year volunteer for Carl DeLoro Elementary School and a current childcare provider. I'm testifying on the need for support and resources for trans and non-binary students and staff. In 2021, I moved to Providence from Michigan as a volunteer for City Year AmeriCorps. City Year is a nonprofit organization and their mission is supporting students and schools, developing civic leaders and sharing promising practices. I met Em Schluter, one of the teachers who received a non-renewal at Loro. It was their first year of City Year and they went on to complete a second year of volunteer work through City Year. Immediately, I was struck by Em's love for their students as well as their partner teacher. They love what they do and throughout this have continuously told me, I just want to be able to keep my job. Whenever I'm with Em, they are talking about how much they love their students. They light up. They are able to relate with their students, a skill so important for a good teacher. Little me would have been lucky to have Em as a teacher. Em is a hard worker and incredibly dedicated. They're courageous for publicly fighting this. Not only are they a teacher, they are a grad student as well. They are working on earning their certifications for teaching in Providence. Let me tell you, they are busy. They spend time after school working on grading and homework in their own classes. Weekends are filled with the same. So how does a district that hired Em and are aware of them working and helping pay on getting certified going to issue a non-renewal because they're looking for someone more qualified? How often is this happening to new teachers? Why would potential teachers want to work for PPSD knowing the district may also hand them a non-renewal notice one year into their career? It's not benefiting the school district that is already having trouble filling positions. It does not benefit the students who are affected by trusted teachers and mentors leaving, leading to confusion and feelings of abandonment. It's not benefiting the school itself in building community to better work together to achieve student success. I think it would be a better use of PPSD's resources to build and invest in teachers' futures. Thank you. To perhaps take a look at their own biases and challenge them. Our trans and non-binary teachers are important. It shows LGBTQ kids a future where they belong. They have a mentor to talk to who understands. Teachers' voices, perspectives and impacts on students are important. What message is PPSD sending when they give three non-binary and trans teachers non-renewal notices? The non-renewal notices can give the reasons they want, but the truth prevails. This is not about Em as an educator and dedicated teacher, but rather an attack on their gender identity. It's a flimsy political statement that's neither fair, just or legal. It's not too late to do the right thing and renew Em for another year for their amazing work that they will continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Please read your name and record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Tamara Paul. I'm here tonight as a concerned queer educator of 28 years. I'm also the parent of two queer, trans middle school students here in Providence. So I can testify that they are here in our school system. Our family was actually new to the Providence Public Schools last year after many years in independent schools. We've been grateful for support from the Office of Equity and Belonging as well as many caring and skilled educators. Alongside special education supports, my children have also benefited from gender support plans through Providence, which ensure their ability to participate in sports, to use restrooms that are safe and comfortable, and generally give us peace of mind as parents as we send them off to school in the morning. It's not easy these days. With each executive order, the country grows more hostile to families like mine. Despite the growing worries for a teacher and a mom like me, Providence has mostly felt like a safe place for my sixth graders. With the recent non-renewals of several trusted queer educators, along with the lack of communication to families from the school department about standing up to the anti-trans executive orders, that sense of safety is starting to erode. I want to echo what was said earlier that our family really appreciated the communication around how the schools will stand up to ICE. And I reached out a couple of days after that to the superintendent and I forget who else, asking if there would be a similar communication about supporting our trans and non-binary queer students and I heard nothing in response. I question how a school department that would discard skilled, hardworking, beloved non-binary teachers will stand up for my non-binary child. I worry that our students whose identities already put them at great risk are losing valuable role models. I know from my own experience decades ago that having confident, loving LGBTQ adults at school can be life-saving for a queer child. And I know from my role as a GSA advisor in the middle school where I teach that out and proud adults raise the competence and self-worth of our trans and queer children. I worry that the protections my family has depended on for our children to safely attend school in Providence are no longer valued and won't be upheld by our superintendent. We heard earlier tonight about attempts to improve chronic absenteeism and specific attempts for targeted populations, for target populations, and those populations, it was not mentioned that that would include trans and queer kids who I would say are at great risk for chronic absenteeism as well as many other things that we know. I implore you to stand up to the small-mindedness and bigotry, rescind these non-renewals, reaffirm support for our trans and non-binary kids and don't be quiet about it. Our children need to know that we stand by them and that they will not be erased.
Thank you. Hey, Jake.
Hello.
Please read your name and record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jake O'Gates. I was one of the non-renewal teachers many years ago. So this has been going on for a long time and I'm here to tell you a little bit about that story. Harassment and removal of queer and politically active teachers is essential to how Providence Public Schools function and it has been. It's not just because of Trump's executive orders. This has been going on for a while. So when I first came to Providence, I was coming, I had graduated from Brown, I was a first-generation college student. I got a full scholarship to go to Northwestern to get a master's in teaching. I come back to Providence because I love it so much that I come back from Chicago to teach here. And my first year was the year of lockdown and pottying in places, which is what my principal used to call it. And my principal was so incompetent that when I emailed someone to get a fan in my room, which was expected for every room at the time, he- room, which was expected for every room at the time, he went out to call me toxic and hated me the whole school year. He told me not to speak Spanish to my students, because I speak Spanish fluently and I have a room full of Spanish-speaking students, I thought maybe that would be helpful in this year. And he told me never to do that. He harassed me for the whole entire year, and then he non-renewed me. Why was I still teaching for two years after that? Because, well, it's very arbitrary how this nonrenewal stuff works. The reason why I wasn't non-renewed that year was because the school board meeting was taken up by a toehopper business. If you know, you remember that. So I was able to teach. So what happens? They shuffled me to Hope High School. I taught at Hope High School for two years. Then what happened? One day I walked into school, and I got called down to the office, and I said, and they said, "I have to leave." So I go home, I get no information about why I was suspended. I'm suspended for months, I get very little information. What I find out is that I had an old Twitter account doxxed by conservative charter school activists who identified my names, said I was the reason why Providence schools were bad, and made a video about old tweets that I made that were so unsavory, such as a tweet where I said, "I was so happy that I started an LGBTQ club at my first school." So these people had the power to get me fired, because basically I was gay on the internet. So this happened three years ago, it traumatized me, I don't want to teach anymore, I can't do it. I still substitute in East credit, so clearly I'm not so much of a menace that I can't teach in front of children. But that's what happened to me. I was subjected during my second nonrenewal process to a humiliating experience of being in a room of 17 fellow teachers who were also being non-renewed. Everyone there had no feedback, they were saying, "Oh, I don't know why I was non-renewed." They all seemed so sad, they seemed like really passionate teachers, and I was told by my union president and the lawyer that we had no chance to fight this. Well, clearly that was a lie. And I wish I had popped PBD Corps at that time to fight for me, so I want to say, PBD Corps, you are the future. You guys are fighting for the renewal of these teachers, not just the three non-binary teachers, but all those teachers, because we all know that those people were also not treated fairly. So you should renew all of those teachers, just because if you can arbitrarily do it because of toehopper business, you can do it today. Those people deserve respect and dignity in that process. And PBD Corps, keep fighting, we got your backs. Thank you.
Take your time. Three minutes, please read your name on the record.
I love happily being the oldest person in the room.
Lot of wisdom.
I put my donuts on three-by-five cards, if anybody remembers what they are. My name is Mark Levy. I drove across three or four bridges to get here, I'm from Bristol, so I can take back to Bristol some of what I heard today. I'm an octogenarian, so I've learned to say to people when they do good things, "You're doing good things." I've learned to say to people when they're not doing good things, to get it together. When I graduated from college in 1964, I went to Mississippi, and I was part of Freedom Summer. I then came to New York City, and I taught. I taught during high school for four years, I taught in college. I then left classroom teaching to work in the labor movement. I worked for several years before I retired. And currently, what I do now is talk about civil rights movement, both at schools here and in England. So I was honored when some people asked me to come, and I wrote out a document, so I won't repeat that. I have two very quick things to say. One is, there's a tsunami coming, and we all better get ready for it. I'm glad that it sounds like y'all have started, but I think there's a lot more to do to get ready for when it gets here and this school system. The second thing I want to say is that I'm honored that all the people back there invited me to come. I'm a kid of the 60s, there were a lot of us back then, I've been wondering how many young people are active, and even some of the people back there with gray hair, they're young too. But I'm honored to be included with them, and I second everything that they've said, and I don't have to go out anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie? Huey?
So that's actually not my name, it's my email, but my name is Steven, just so we're clear. Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so hello, my name is Steven Macacy, my friends call me Fee, and my students call me Mixter Mac. I am a non-binary substitute teacher in Providence at the middle school level. I chose middle because it is the time when students begin to really explore and understand what it is to be part of a community full of misunderstanding and disagreement, and begin to develop the interpersonal skills needed to successfully navigate and participate in the world at large. Our students learn far more than we teach them directly. We as adults must model what good citizenship looks like, like this. We must model what healthy conflict resolution looks like, and guide them through it. At most middle schools, I can expect to hear a slur or a denigration of my identity or someone else's on the regular. Students or staff disparaging others' race, gender, religion, or sexuality. And occasionally, even when my own identity is targeted, when I introduce myself as Mixter Mac with the pronouns they/them, those moments of conflict, I'm able to open up conversation and facilitate dialogue between students in order to help them better accept each other, and help them develop deeper socio-emotional, metacognitive, and self-reflective skills. Hatred and fear are learned traits, and we must ask ourselves what it is that we want to impart on the next generation of students, or if we wish to demonstrate the value and strength in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I spent several months last year teaching at Del Cesto. It is here I came into knowing both Make Sam Wallace and Make M. Schlueter in various capacities. I have substitute taught their classrooms while they were out, following lesson plans they prepared, sadly a rarity, which included differentiated instruction and appropriate adaptations in order to assist each and every student to demonstrate, meet, advance, and deepen their learning, knowledge, and understanding. I have taught beside them while covering special education collaborative teachers, where I have had direct observation into the evidence-based English language educational strategies both Make Sam and Make M. implement, aimed at fostering content-specific academic language and developing higher-order thinking skills such as analysis, synthesis, evaluation, interpretation, and transfer. I had firsthand observation of their dedication and participation in preparing, conducting, and facilitating various school functions and activities going above and beyond their contractual responsibilities. I can tell you that not a single student who wanted a yearbook last year at Del Cesto was unable to do so, as Make Sam was able to produce and sell them at a cost of something like $3 per. Talk about fostering a sense of belonging. I can tell you that many students who began the year with little motivation to achieve academically, who didn't see themselves or their worth in our society or the advantages of education, were able to do so by the end of the year, thanks in part to the teaching, acceptance, vibrancy, respect, honor, and dignity that are shown and on display in these two educators each and every day. When looking for examples of excellence at Del Cesto to direct students toward, I didn't have to search far. If educators of their caliber are whom the district and RIDE have not chosen to renew, it calls into question the underlying motivation, discrimination, and politics at play. Thank you.
Thank you. Tobias? Gabriel? Hey Gabriel.
Hello.
Please read your name on the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Gabriel Torres. I'm not in Providence, I'm not from Rhode Island, I live in East Providence, but you don't need to be of in order to speak for what's right. Today, I'm here to talk on the unjust nonrenewal of all these different teachers, and it's hard to ignore the greater context at play here. The fact that we've been demanding transparency, and this is what we're being met with, is ludicrous. The fact that we've been in a basement where we submitted requests to change venues is an embarrassment. The fact that public comment was at the end of your agenda that we had no say in creating is ridiculous. The fact that we've been demanding transparency, again, is what we're being met with. So the fact that this board is following suit in the attacks from the Trump admin on LGBTQ educators and working people in general is incredibly disheartening. To see that the school board is banning the need to such attacks by mandating the nonrenewals of educators such as Sam M. Brandy is ridiculous. Why? Why, when there's a teacher shortage, even less representing LGBTQAI+ is this happening? What sense does it make to let go of teachers and outright ban them from working in Providence when you're actively struggling to find more teachers? This makes zero sense. Who does this benefit? Is it benefiting the students? Is it benefiting the remaining faculty and staff? Do you all like staying here until 9:30 at night? I'm hungry, y'all, we're tired. This isn't funny, y'all. These are people's jobs, these are people's livelihoods, these are kids. There's a saying out there, right, that our teachers' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. So what are we doing about that? What is your answer to that question? Because I don't think we've seen that answer tonight, and we hope to see that soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan? Hey Dan.
Sorry, I ran out of time.
You want me to read that stuff?
Well, can you read that first?
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. I promised the kid I would read something, I ran out of time, and like, we're gonna watch this. So like, I'm gonna get called out in class.
Please read your name on the record, you have three minutes.
Hi everybody, my name is Dan Hittrich, and I guess I'm starting with this statement. So this is a statement from a student. My opinion on the situation with you and Make M., I believe you being Make Sam. Since I came to this school, I have received a lot of hate. Although not being in any organizations like LGBTQ, I strongly believe that whatever may be happening, it's just horrible, because it seems very targeted towards the only two non-binary teachers. On top of that, Make Sam is the only teacher I have looked forward to most of the time, so it just feels wrong to, what I view it as, to be banning the only two non-binary teachers in the school from teaching anywhere in Providence. If these two are going down, I'm going down with them. Wow, that's a great sentiment. So I have written something, we'll see if I can squeeze it in. So I'm a resident here in Providence, hopefully soon a homeowner and a taxpayer, and I'm here testifying as a concerned citizen of the city, because some of the decisions made by the folks in charge of our district recently have been dismayed. Ever since the state took over Providence Public Schools, they've said over and over again that their work is aimed at the best outcomes for Providence students and families. So it strikes me as a bizarre decision then, to issue nonrenewals to beloved teachers when the district has consistently struggled to fill dozens of teacher vacancies every single year. RIDE's own consultants make this clear in their reports on the progress of the Turnaround Action Plan, that is supposedly aimed at improving our schools. It notes repeatedly that the district lacks sufficient teachers to cover all classes, as you've heard so many people testify today. Students end up with entire periods with no instruction at all, just directionless study halls, because the district can't find enough teachers to work here. And RIDE and their consultants have tried to blame the teachers' union for this, if you read the Turnaround Action Plan, there's a lot of anti-union nonsense in there. But when the union is the only organization fighting for a living wage, so that teachers who come to Providence can actually afford to live here, that argument doesn't stand up to scrutiny. Every year, since the state takeover, the district, now unaccountable to the people of Providence since the state took it over, has terminated numerous teachers while leaving dozens of classes with no one to lead them. Now the district is trying to do the same thing again, continuing to perpetuate the same teacher staffing crisis they claim to be working to solve. This is a disturbing trend, where the state's leadership blames our teachers for this crisis rather than properly funding our schools so we can properly staff them. There's endless money to hire private contractors so that they can make money building new buildings, but supposedly there's not enough money to hire enough teachers to staff the positions our kids need. I love this city. That's why I moved here, found a job here, and plan to buy a home here. Providence is not a city dedicated to union busting, to bigoted attacks on LGBTQ people, or to maintaining a permanent crisis of staffing in our schools. We are a city that celebrates diversity, that knows that good jobs and fair conditions that unions protect are what built this country, and wants to promote beloved teachers, not fire them. These nonrenewals fly in the face of that and must be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. Vita? How are you? Please read your name on the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Becca Yang, and I'm here to read on behalf of Annalee Snapp, who is a parent of a Providence student. I'm writing not only as a concerned parent, but as a firm believer in the values of inclusivity, equity, and representation in our public schools. Our six-year-old daughter is a student at Asher Messer, a Providence public school, and she absolutely loves her kindergarten class. As parents, we made the conscious decision to enroll her in our local public school because we wanted her to grow up surrounded by a diverse and vibrant community, one where friendships extend across cultural and socioeconomic lines, and where she learns from an early age that everyone matters. However, I am deeply troubled by efforts to erase or marginalize members of our school community, particularly non-binary teachers and faculty. Representation matters. It matters in our classrooms, in our leadership, and in the daily interactions that shape our children's understanding of the world. The presence of non-binary educators not only enriches our school system, but also ensures that every child, regardless of their gender identity or expression, can see a future in which they are respected, valued, and safe. I'm particularly alarmed by the recent nonrenewals of several beloved educators in PPSD, Brandy Tucker, M. Schlueter, and Sam Wallace, faculty members who have dedicated their time, energy, and expertise to helping our children learn and grow. When a teacher is non-renewed, they not only lose their current position, but are also effectively banned from teaching anywhere in Providence. Even more distressing, they are denied the opportunity to apply for other similar positions within the district, abruptly cutting short their careers in our public schools. To make matters worse, these educators are expected to continue teaching through the remainder of the school year, fully aware that they are being pushed out of the very system to which they have devoted themselves. This is unacceptable. It is a direct attack on the integrity of our education system, and a disservice to students who thrive under the guidance of these exceptional educators. Removing non-binary teachers or any educators without due cause who foster a welcoming, inclusive learning environment sends a chilling message, that identity rather than ability determines one's place in the classroom. It contradicts the values we should be instilling in our children, the values of fairness, dignity, and respect for all people. If my daughter ever comes to understand her gender beyond traditional assumptions, I want her to have trusted, knowledgeable adults to turn to. I want her to see that her teachers, like her classmates, come from all walks of life and are valued for who they are. Most importantly, I want her to grow up in a community where diversity is celebrated and not erased. Exclusion is a form of harm, and policies that alienate or remove non-binary teachers harm every student who looks to them for guidance, acceptance, and inspiration. I urge you to take immediate action to rescind the nonrenewals of these educators and to ensure that PPSD does not continue down a path that prioritizes exclusion over excellence in teaching. I ask you, what kind of message do we send to our children when we remove people from their lives simply for being who they are? What kind of community are we building if we allow prejudice to dictate who is welcome in our public schools? We must stand together to protect those who uplift our children. We must ensure that our schools remain spaces of learning, growth, and belonging. The best interest of our children and of our entire community depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. The last person is Farida. Is Farida here today?
Valerie?
Oh, is Valerie here?
Farida's here.
Okay. Is Valerie here too, or no? Okay. Hey Farida, please read your name on the record, three minutes. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Farida, hi. And I'm here reading on behalf of Penne Reid O'Leary. She has worked in Providence Public Schools for 21 years, and at Del Cesto Middle Schools for 19 years. And these are her words. M. is known to their students as the teacher that understands them, the teacher that doesn't get mad if they mess up, the teacher who actually listens to them. I know this because I have shared many students with M. over the past two years, and a practice I have implemented in my classroom is weekly acts of kindness. Having students write an appreciation note to anyone who made their week a little harder. I cannot tell you how many students have chosen to write notes to M. The connections M. has made with our sixth graders is one that these students will remember Sam seeks to understand people, not only students, but staff. Sam is genuine in all connections with others and aims to Sam is genuine in all connections with others and aims to make everyone around him feel safe, valued, and empowered. From day one, I have witnessed Sam's ability to make connections with students. They are able to connect with students in the most genuine ways. Whether it is speaking Spanish, finding a space, or activity, or sport in which they would thrive, building their confidence during high school choice time, helping students set goals for attendance or behavior, Sam makes sure all students that come across their way have had genuine contact. Sam and M., both inspiring educators, are showing up. They are doing what is asked of them. They are taking the courses, getting the certificates and degrees, and they are doing the extra duties. They are spreading acts of kindness in our school community that are needed for it to thrive. Yet PPSD has chosen to nonrenew that and let another district get a hold of these outstanding teachers. Make it make sense."
Thank you. So we have included public comments, but Mr. Solicitor, I don't know how to, because you know, the community has been correcting me all day today, how we could open up the floor, maybe, you know, hopefully some members in the community want to just share some thoughts on whatever that may be.
Yeah, I think having that could also still be incorporated under public comments, and we're still our members of the public. You know, we don't have a specific designation for school board comments tonight, I think going forward we will.
Okay.
But that usually falls as public comments, but I think we could also qualify that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Anyone in the community would like to give a word on today? Okay. Please read your name into the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Krista Clementson, and I'm here with my husband, Kiplin Clementson. We are both Providence residents and public school graduates. I also came over the bridge, two bridges to get here from Bristol. I work at the Roger Williams Law School, and I stand here before you to urge you to consider the lasting impact of the decisions you will make today, tomorrow, and in the future. I want you to take pride in the school district, in this school district, Providence School District, and set high standards for education. You have a unique and powerful opportunity to set a precedent that will guide not only this current generation of students, but those that will follow. I need you to live with intention, with wisdom, and with compassion. Attempts to discredit and distract you will come, okay, and those are real issues that will create distractions in your process, in your work. But your focus should always be, and should always remain, in fighting for our students, ensuring that our schools receive the resources that they need, and to advocate for policies that benefit families and educators. If not now, then when? If not you, then who? You have the opportunity, and I thank you so much for taking this leadership, for coming here and taking this position as a school board member to represent our families, our students, and our teachers. Thank you.
Representative Morales? Welcome.
Hey, President Stevens and members of the school board, my name is Davis Morales Hehim, and I proudly serve as a state representative here in the city of Providence. And as referenced several times throughout tonight, we are at a turning point within our public school system where we are still facing a staffing crisis, one that continues to grow specifically as relates to teachers who have PSL certifications in addition to school librarians. And so when we talk about the 100-plus vacancies, it is important to remember that these aren't just numbers and statistics. They reflect the lived experience of Providence Public School students and the reality that their families have to live with, knowing that their children are receiving a public education without a permanent teacher in their classrooms. And then we question why not enough progress has been made in our classrooms. It's because the level of connection and relationships that our students are able to build, whether it's a long-term substitute or a day-to-day substitute, is not the same level of relationship that they are able to build with a full-time, permanent teacher that has job security and the reassurance that they can count on the fact that they will be back the following school year. I'm frustrated that we have to take the time as a community to be here, to talk not only about the three impacted educators, but also those other educators, our black and brown educators that look and reflect the needs of our students, because we recognize that this staffing crisis is growing. So it doesn't help when there are letters of nonrenewal being shared, and I quote, "The department desires to find a more qualified teacher," end quote. But there is no greater qualification to be an educator and a teacher than one's ability to build a relationship with their students. And that is what we have heard tonight. And down below in the basement, you will see three different poster boards that were designed by PPSD students, highlighting and emphasizing across different sticky notes the impact that these respective educators have had on their lives. And at this moment, I want to redirect my comments, not to the board, because I know many of you understand the magnitude of this issue, but to our superintendent, who I have lots of respect for. But Imano, you know that when those letters are signed, it is your name that is at the bottom. When it comes to those letters of nonrenewal, it is a reflection of the school district's leadership. Our teachers deserve levels of transparency, but the reassurance that when it comes to the difficult working conditions in the most diverse school district in this state, that they are going to have a district that supports them. And so I urge you to work with the bureaucrats within central office and start working towards reversing these letters of nonrenewal. We have all heard the public comments from fellow educators, from families, but most importantly, students. And I hope that moving forward, there is a more transparent and thoughtful process in the letters, because if one is to be nonrenewed, there should be a greater explanation than just saying we desire to find one more qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please read your name into the record.
Hi everyone, my name is Deborah Levy. I work for the Community Libraries of Providence, and I work for the libraries under a grant that we have through United Way to strengthen the connections between the school libraries and our public libraries. I've worked with Sam Wallace in my role there, as well as all the other wonderful school librarians in our elementary and middle schools. School libraries are really important to the schools, you've all heard a lot already about how, what a great job Sam does to support students in the library, and I want to reaffirm that in my work with Sam, they've been a key member of that work, they've been enthusiastic about working with our public libraries. I know that working with community partners is a priority for the district, and Sam is very engaged in that, as well as engaging activities to happen in the school. I also support rescinding the nonrenewals for the other teachers, I'm not going to reiterate all the reasons you've already heard tonight for that. But the other thing I wanted to add in my capacity as a Providence resident and community member, is that I hope to be a parent of students in Providence schools one day. I'm not right now, but part of the reason that I choose to stay here and that I want to have a family here is because of this school district that we have. So it's, to echo what some other folks have said, it's not just about the students that are in our schools right now, it's about what we're doing to make sure our community is one that families want to stay in and that they want to come to. And when I'm thinking about my future family, my future children, which I want to have in Providence, my decision about whether or not to stay here and to send them to public schools relies a lot on how our district treats teachers, especially teachers who I know are doing a great job for their students. So, thank you.
Thank you. How are you?
Hello.
Yes, please read your name into the record, three minutes.
Sure, my name is Andy Wilson, I'm a former Providence community member, I live in Boston, I drove here with my heart on my sleeve to talk to you all this evening. I'd like to tell you a few words about my friend M. M. Schluter teaches. Teaching is not something everyone has a natural disposition for, and is not something everyone is capable of. It takes someone with resilience and grit to teach. Teaching is one of the most underpaid, undervalued professions in this country with one of the biggest payoffs, instilling knowledge in our next generation. M. is everything that encapsulates a good educator, curious, knowledgeable, compassionate, and competent. M. and I worked together in the Providence School District with City Year a few years ago, where I got to see firsthand M.'s passion and knack for helping the kids of this community grow into citizens who will shape this community in exceptional, uncountable ways to come. M. is trusted by the students in their classroom. As a kid that grew up in a failing public school system in the South, I know how rare it is to find a teacher you trust, someone who inspires you to come back to school day after day. Without those connections, students lose hope, and statistics show they are far more likely to drop out, limiting their futures. Education is the ticket to a life of ruthless growth and unlimited opportunity. The students of the Providence School District deserve that same trust. They deserve someone who cares about their education, their future, and their day-to-day wellness. There is no person better suited to care for them like that than M. Schluter. I urge you to reconsider your decision with these nonrenewals. Providence cannot afford to lose these incredible teachers, and especially M., not with 100-plus vacancies already being covered ad hoc by substitutes. M. will give their all for the PPSD students, your children, your future community leaders. And shouldn't you do the same for your teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. Your final comments? All right, please read your name into the record, three minutes.
Thank you for the three minutes. My name is Victoria Antedi, I'm a graduate student at Brown University, and I'm the vice president of our union. GLO, being the name of our union, it's one of the fastest-growing unions in Rhode Island. I'm also a resident of Fox Point, so I'll be speaking from some of these experiences. GLO is an anti-racist feminist local, we take that very seriously. I'm also, sorry, I forgot to mention, I'm also an educator in math, where folks like me, women, and Afro-Latinas are very few and far between. I'm also a student who needed ESL instruction, I'm a student who needed to see herself in queer educators as a queer woman. And now I'm an educator who has heard time and time again from her students, the impact of my presence and my advocacy on their behalf. Leadership in education needs to set the example, like workers and people of conscience have done throughout history. The federal government is not the only lever of power. Us workers have power, and you as a board have power. Use your power and don't give it to the federal government, it's your power, use it to protect education, use it to protect our educators. Because of that, I'm asking you to rescind the nonrenewals, all the nonrenewals now, to have rescinded them yesterday.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Please read your name into the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Faith Anaya, I use she and he pronouns, and I'm currently a student teacher at the Met in Providence, but previously I also worked with City Year AmeriCorps. I moved from Colorado all the way out here to be part of the Providence community, and I found that it is a community that I do not want to leave. I worked at Del Cesto for two years in City Year AmeriCorps along with Sam, and they are probably one of the primary reasons that I decided that middle school was right for me. I'm currently a graduate student at URI, pursuing teaching in secondary mathematics, wanting very desperately to, once I complete my master's program, to return to Del Cesto. That is the biggest goal I have in my heart. It is an amazing community built by the people like M. and Sam, who foster sort of the kindness and the openness and the generosity of their time and their spirit. But the other thing I want to talk about is sort of the perspective of PPSD as a whole from the stuff that I glean from my fellow prospective teachers in my master's program. In that program, PPSD is not talked about very highly. There's no direct discussion that prospective teachers shouldn't go to PPSD, they talk around it. There is suggestion that maybe you should look far and wide, beyond Providence, to find places to go to teach. That's the vibe, that's the understanding, that's the way people talk about this district. And it breaks my heart, because I have seen the dedicated community and the dedicated people who are making up this district. But what am I supposed to say to them, when this is what happens to the dedicated teachers who want to come to Providence and want to teach in this district? That before you're even able to try and get tenure, you will be nonrenewed, you will be hounded and asked to do things beyond your capacity with very little support. And so I want to come here with the idea of like, I am a prospective teacher, desperately wanting to come back to this district, and I don't even know what to say to my fellow prospective teachers who look at Providence with disdain or with fear because of the things that are happening to the teachers here. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we shift into our very last item, I want to let everyone know, this is our very first meeting, it's a board meeting, our business meeting, so you know, what I'll do is I'll speak with each board member and see exactly where we stand on these issues and see exactly what we can all do. We definitely support our teachers, definitely our students, and we don't want anyone to feel as if, you know, you're being discriminated against. So you know, we definitely will have that conversation, we'll speak among each other, and we'll definitely make sure we get back to all of you, so thank you.